I'm sure your cellphones are off, and if you need to have conversations, please take them outside of the room. I see a lot of new faces here. If you're here to speak in support or in opposition to a project, please, when you have a chance at the mic, give us new information. That's really important to us as a board. We take every piece of information under advisement before we make a decision. So your voice is important, but give us new information. If somebody has already stated what your concern is, put your name and address on the record. If you're here as an attorney, or if you're presenting your own project, please talk to us about the reason for the appeal. Talk to us about the variances you're requesting, and we will hear about the neighborhood projects' process from the mayor's office of Neighborhood Services. Finally, in conformance with the open meeting law, this is to inform you that this meeting is being livestreamed. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First order of business is, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Counselor address, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, 179 London Street.
For the record, calling BOA 796-542-179-LONDON STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, requesting a brief deferral on this. We requested to appear before a newly-formed community group at the request of the District City Councilor. We've agreed to do that, so we probably need about two months in order to make this presentation to that group.
Defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
Short deferral. When are you meeting? Two months.
Probably within the next 30 days.
What is the newly-formed community group?
I'm not sure of the name yet. It's for that specific area where this property lies. I'm sure there'll be a lot of that in East Boston.
The earliest we can get you in here is May 8th.
Fine.
You may.
346-348 Chelsea Street.
Yep, we have that on the agenda, so I'm gonna call him in for the record. Calling BOA 793-907-346-CHelsea STREET. There's a commandment case, BOA 793-308-348-CHelsea STREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, yeah, this was defective notice. We're requesting renotice for this, and asking for March 27th, if possible.
We have that date.
May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Second.
You have a date of 3/27 at 10:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Counselor address, please.
312 to 320 Huntington Avenue.
For the record, calling BOA 757-150-312 to 320 Huntington Ave. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Daniel Glishman, 1 International Place, Suite 3700, Boston, Massachusetts. Members of the Board are requesting a short deferral here. We're still working on design with T-Mobile to try and present the ideal proposal to the Board.
May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
The earliest we can get is May 8th as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing none, we'll call the first case. Calling BOA 790-485-71-BORDER STREET. This is to combine lots and to create a new lot consisting of 1,378 square feet and erect a new five-story, eight-unit residential building with common roof deck. Violation to Article 53, Section 8. A multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, rear yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With respect to the property at 6971 Border Street, this is a proposal to demolish an existing two-family dwelling, combine it with a vacant lot next door, and to construct a five-story, eight-unit building. I provided the Board with a copy of information that is the presentation that we presented to the neighborhood to show the context of this particular neighborhood. Just as the Board's familiar, Border Street actually shares a number of zoning districts, including the waterfront Maritime Reserve located directly across the street, where the height is about 55 feet. Directly to the left of this property is the ongoing Copper Smith Village project, which is 100-plus unit multifamily development at about five stories. There are numerous other projects in the immediate area at five and six stories. So this proposal is within context of the surrounding neighborhood that is rapidly changing. It is located within walking distance of the Maverick T Station. The present condition of the property is not very good and requires substantial rehabilitation and investment. Our proposal is to create a workable unit size mix of studios and two bedrooms for a total of eight units. We did have an opportunity to present this to the local Butters in the neighborhood. I believe there are Butters here who will speak in favor of this. We did have an opportunity to reach out to direct the Butters. We're not aware of any objections. We did hear concern from a Butter further down, they were confused about a different project, not necessarily this project that's being proposed. I can walk through the specifics on the bedroom count and size. As I indicated, six of these units will be studios. These are consistent with the recommendations of the BPDA relative to metropolitan-sized units. This is located well within walking distance, as I mentioned, of Maverick T Station. The larger units, which would be located on the fourth and fifth floors in duplex, are about 1,200 square feet total, and those are each two-bedroom. We are proposing no parking on the site. That was something that we did talk about with the neighborhood. This is a relatively tight site, located in the corner of a private way as well as a public street, but that did not seem to be a major concern in the neighborhood.
Tell us about Unit 1. It says it's 350 square feet plus 150 square foot loft?
Yeah, so I understand that's below the recommended 450 square feet, but I think the total with the loft space would be in excess of 450 square feet, so we believe it's consistent with the metropolitan unit size.
And is any roof deck being proposed on this?
I believe we do have roof decks that we're showing, and these would be, my understanding is exclusive. We did receive a violation for accessibility. This would be limited to the upper units only, so we're not proposing to make those a common roof deck.
And what's the building height?
The total height would be 50 feet, the top of the roof.
And this is 35 feet?
35 is the limit.
What are the adjacent buildings on the other side?
Copper Smith to the immediate left, Mr. Pizzani, is 58 feet, and to the right is a three-story presently under construction. My understanding is that is intending to go up at some point in the future as well. And height limit directly across the street for all, essentially, these buildings usually be ultimately blocked with future development across the street. The minimum height is 55 feet directly across, yes.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I'm Jesus Garcia with the Office of Neighborhood Services. For this project, we hosted a Butters meeting on November 8th last year, and nobody is speaking in opposition about this project. Therefore, we would like to go on record for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant relief requested, but I have just one more question. The roof deck is accessible to all units or just the top?
It will be accessible to just the top units for compliance issues regarding accessibility.
Motion, make motion to grant relief requested with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With that proviso, good luck.
Calling the next case, calling 789-425-331-CHelsea STREET. This is to raise an existing building and erect a four-unit residential dwelling. Violation to Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking. Article 53, Section 8, forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient lot size. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the maximum allowed number of stories has been exceeded. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient open space per unit. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. With me is Ricky Bellevoe, who is the principal of Volney Capital and the owner of this property. This proposal is to demolish existing two-family dwelling located right outside of the Day Square Business Center in East Boston, and to propose a four-unit, four-story building in its place. By way of context, and I provided a sketch of some of these surrounding properties, as this neighborhood, like many neighborhoods, I think, in East Boston at this point, is growing and rapidly changing, there are a number of projects that have been approved in this area, including a five-story building located immediately to the right, a four-story building located immediately to the rear, four-and-a-half-story, 15-unit building diagonally to the rear, as well as an eight-unit, four-story building located further down the street.
And that was all built with relief? All of those?
Those are all built with relief, from my understanding. My recollection is, yes, they were.
Zoning by relief?
Yeah, exactly. So our proposal is to propose something that is relatively in scale with what we see as the changing face of this particular neighborhood, that would be lower than the immediately adjacent building at McGrath's Funeral Home, which, as I mentioned, will stand at five stories and 36 units. Our proposal is to, this is intended for homeownership, with unit sizes of roughly about 1,000 square feet, plus or minus. These are all two-bedroom, two-bath units, with the fourth level being set back a bit based upon some comments that we did hear from the neighborhood, relative to trying to keep some of the character of the height of the existing three stories located along Chelsea Street. We did have an opportunity to present this to both the neighborhood, as well as the Eagle Hill Civic Association. I do have a letter in support showing that the Eagle Hill Civic Association did overwhelmingly support this proposal. They view this as a reasonable development for this particular neighborhood based upon what's been happening in and around Day Square. I would point out, this is also within walking distance of two Blue Line train stations, both airport train station located right off of Bremen Street, as well as Wood Island Station, probably both equidistant from the particular site.
Tell us about that roof deck.
So because this will be condominiums, we are, there are two means of egress to the roof deck. Again, in order to address accessibility issues, if this were to be condos, the marketability of these typically is to make the roof deck exclusive to the upper-level unit.
It's accessed by headhouse?
It is accessed by headhouse, but we think the design of that will be, again, consistent with the height and some of the other features in the surrounding neighborhood.
And this is, are you in a flood zone?
So this is AE. Where, our understanding is, as of March of 2016, this was added to the flood zone. It's a newly-added site. We are certainly intent on complying with flood design regulations. There is no habitable space below the first level. All utilities are self-contained in the unit, and the architect is working with the engineer to discuss compliance with the base flood elevation to ensure there's no living space below that.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate. What is the base flood elevation for this site?
I'm not certain, off the top of my head, but I know that ISD has noted that compliance will be required for a constructive drawings.
The headhouse has a part of the roof sloped on the headhouse?
Yes, that's correct.
Stay windows open, I'd like to.
Any other questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair and members of the Board, I'm Jesus Garcia from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support for this project. During the Butters meeting, the concern that the people mentioned, and it was about parking, however, the train station is pretty close to this property, and Eagle Hill vote in support for this project. Thank you.
There's no parking associated with the Butters?
No, no parking proposed.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Judy and the City Council of Lydia Edwards' office. The Council wishes to find recognition support. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso?
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 798-880-23-EVERETT STREET. This is seeking to change the occupancy from an existing building from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. Also to renovate the building, create two new rear decks and one roof deck. Violation to Article 25, Section 5, Flood Hazard District. Article 53, Section 52, Roof Structure Restrictions. Article 53, Section 56, Off-Street Parking is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, Additional Lot Area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, Usable Open Space is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Jeff Drago with an address of 15 Broad Street, representing the owner and proposed developer, Gene Bernstein, of 23 Everett Street. We have a proposal, as was mentioned, seeking zoning relief to change the occupancy from an existing one-family to a two-family dwelling, and completely renovate the structure itself, also creating some rear decks in the back and a roof deck on the top. I just want to point out, the current bedroom count of the building now, as it stands, is five bedrooms. With the new two proposed condos, this will be reduced to a three-bedroom project, so one on the first floor, two on the top. The particular zoning district is a 3F 2000. In the photos that I had submitted to you, you'll see that the area is comprised of many threes and twos, which we're just trying to replicate with two condominium units. We're trying to, we'll keep the height under the allowable 35 feet, or slightly over 27 feet, which would match the building directly to the right of us. Just to go over the unit sizes, first-floor unit would be a 535 square foot, one-bedroom, one-bath condominium. And Unit 2, at 1,204 square feet, would be a two-bedroom, two-bath condominium. The top roof deck would be exclusive to the top floor, and the headhouse is roughly about 60 to 65 feet, just provides room for the spiral staircase to come up. We did get the support of the Gold Street Association, as well as the Butters in the neighborhood, who really wanted to see this particular building cleaned up, rehabbed, and condoized. Just to go over some of the violations that were mentioned, of which many are pre-existing. The rear yard required for this area is 30 feet, or at 8 feet and 3/4.
30 feet and 3/4?
Yes, correct, to the deck. Usable open space is 300 square feet per dwelling unit, or slightly under a 215 square feet per dwelling unit. Although, we do not provide any parking because we keep the structure remaining. We're not touching the, we're not taking down the building, so there's no way to create any parking. We are walking distance directly to Maverick T Station, and we are reducing that bedroom count, as I had mentioned, from the current building itself. I can pause now for any questions that the Board may have.
Tell us about the flood hazard district.
So it is within a flood hazard district, since we're not putting any living space in the basement, there's no habitable space in the bottom. We should meet all the requirements.
How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board?
Is there a reason that the headhouse is designed so it's at the front of the building as opposed to the rear?
It was just a matter of, when it was comprised just of layout, but we can certainly, yeah, I mean, we can certainly change that.
I think it sort of sticks out like a sword going right on the face.
Sure, yeah. I mean, we can certainly work to change that and put that in the back. That's not a problem, if the Board so asks.
Any other questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I'm Jesus Garcia from the Office of Neighborhood Services. About this project, we hosted a Butters meeting on November of the last year, and there is no opposition from the director Butters who showed to this meeting. So, thank you.
We are the chair, members of the Board, Judy and the City Council of Lydia Edwards' office. The Council wishes to find recognition support. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review with special attention to the headhouse. Try to move that to the back.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that?
Thank you, guys.
Calling BOA 788-704-164-LAYDEN STREET. This is a change of occupancy from a two to a three-unit residential dwelling. Violation to Article 53, Section 8, Three-Family is Forbidden Use in a Two-Family Subdistrict. Article 53, Section 9, The Location of the Main Entrance for Unit 3. Article 53, Section 54, Screening and Buffering, None is Proposed. Article 53, Section 56, Insufficient Parking Garage Drive is Dedicated to Unit 2 Only. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Laurence Scatino, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, Massachusetts. And with me is the owner of the property, Cynthia Wilcock. Just a brief description of this property, we're seeking to go from a two to a three. This is a pre-existing condition. When my client purchased the property in 2014, this unit was built. We're now seeking to just legalize the unit. There is no one occupying it at the time. This is an owner-occupied building as well. Along the street of Leyden Street, by way of history, there's a mix of two, threes, fours, and even some six-unit buildings. We are within walking distance of both Orient Heights and Suffolk Downs Train Station.
Tell us about the violations.
So the first violation is, we are in a two-family residential neighborhood, and we're seeking to go to a three-family. As I mentioned, up and down Leyden Street, there's quite a few three-to-even-six-unit buildings. The location of the main entrance for Unit Number 3 is actually in the back of the building. Leyden Street is on a hill, so the building is actually set into the land. And screening and buffering, we're willing to do whatever complies with BPDA design review on that. And finally, our last violation is armed parking. We do have parking for one vehicle on the property already, but Leyden Street doesn't seem to be necessarily an issue with parking. We met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Group twice, as well as had in a Butters meeting, and there didn't seem to be any opposition to the issue. I have a letter from the Orient Heights Neighborhood Association as well.
So this is, this is the house?
Yes.
So the first unit is the unit where the garage is?
Yes.
The second unit is all of the white?
Correct.
Where's the third unit?
There's a unit in the back.
It's in the back. And how large is that unit?
So each of the units... Unit 1 is 678 square feet with one bedroom. Unit 2 is 1,249 with three bedrooms, which is the owner's unit. And Unit 3 is 863 square feet, which is one bedroom.
863. And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in that, in that third unit?
It's not, it's not a basement unit.
Walkout?
It's a walkout unit, so I don't think the architect called that out on his plans.
And has, has the owner been paying taxes on this as a three-family?
No.
But it's in the past been occupied? The unit has been occupied?
I don't know when the last time it was occupied. From when she's purchased it, it hasn't been, so.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are okay. Could you point me to the plan for the third unit? Where is it located?
So if you go to, I believe the architect is calling that Unit 3 on the proposed plans, and it's the last page of the packet.
Now, is it, again, what is the access to it? I'm trying to figure out what floor it's actually on.
So the way Leyden Street, the way it's set into the hill, it's actually probably parallel with the second level. So it's almost behind, so it doesn't add an extra level, it's parallel to the second unit in the front.
Is it a separate building?
No.
So, a quick question, there's a side entrance.
Correct.
Is that for Unit 3, or is that for the house itself?
There's two side entrances, one for Unit 2 and one for Unit 3.
Okay.
Do you have a picture, I see the front elevation, picture of the front elevation. Do you have a side view that indicates how that entrance actually?
If you look at the street down, if you look at the page called Down Leyden Street, you can see the side view of the house.
Oh, it's huge.
Yes, it sets into the hill.
Oh.
It's wider rather than taller.
Any idea when this was built? I mean, the addition exceeds the size of the original house, and I'm having a difficult time believing that it's drawn on notice all these years.
Sometime in the 50s or 60s, we think. We're not, you know, we can't be 100% sure, but we're willing to, we want to bring this up to code and...
All set, Mr. Pizzani?
Yes.
Any other questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I'm Jesus Garcia from the Office of Neighborhood Services. During the Butters meeting, we didn't receive any major concerns about this project, and also, given the support from the Civic Association, we would like to go on record in support for this project. Thank you.
We are the chair, members of the Board, Judy and the City Council of Lydia Edwards' office. The Council wishes to find recognition support. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with, you know, a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next case, BOA 796-309-334, Bunker Hill Street. This is to demolish an existing single-family structure and erect a new four-story, single-family dwelling with rear decks and garage. The violation is Article 62, Section 30, Application for the Dimensional Requirements, Conformity Within Existing Building Alignment and the Front Yard Setbacks. Article 62, Section 8, Insufficient Lot Size. Article 62, Section 8, Insufficient Lot Width. Article 62, Section 8, Insufficient Lot Frontage Width. Article 62, Section 8, Maximum Allowed Number of Stories Has Been Exceeded. And Article 62, Section 8, Maximum Allowed Height Has Been Exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Attorney Eugene Kelly, 223 Commonwealth Avenue, Boston.
Tim Johnson, Architect, 190 Old Colony Ave, Boston.
So this is an existing, single-family house in Charlestown, in which there was a long-term owner who has since died. The house is in serious disrepair. It's a three-story house, and what we're proposing to do, basically, is to tear down the existing house because it's in such disrepair. In fact, there's a brick, the first floor has a brick facade, which you can pretty much put your hand through because the brick is all crumbling. But besides that, the house really occupies the lot. It does not go, it comes almost right to the front lot line, as does all the other houses on Bunker Hill Street. It is, what we're, basically, we're squaring it off in the back. There is a small rear yard existing, which we're keeping, but it's not the regulation size. Nothing here is regulation size. So one of the things, we had in a Butters meeting on February 13th, it was very well-attended, with lots of comments and concerns about a number of things, one of which was the height of the building. We are going from a three-story building to a four-story building, and what we're doing is putting in interior parking on the first floor. So we're putting two spaces inside, and we're not, we're taking away one space on the street, but it's not really a full one space, because there is a fire hydrant that has, you have to have dimensional, you know, width to stay away from it, and part of that will be in front of, that open area will be in front of the garage door. In any event, so there'll be two spaces inside, and what happens when you, from the comments that were made at the meeting, and the architect's gonna go into the real detail about it, but one of the comments were about the height of the building, and we were exceeding the 35 feet allowed, and we've now reduced some of the interior floor levels, so that we're now below 30, we are at the 35 feet. So there's no, and when you look, just so you know, to put it in context, when you look at the building, and if you, so if you look at the plans, you'll see there is a three-story, but very tall building to the left. We are not, we were going above that, but now we're below that. And on the right-hand side, there is a school that was converted to condominiums, and then immediately adjacent to us, there was what I'd call a muse house building with two units that is, it's either one story or one and a half stories. That muse house has no windows on our side... That muse house has no windows on our side of the building. They do have, however, some skylights in their roof, and they were concerned about our ability to look into their place by looking down at it. There was also concern about the size of the decks, and we've reduced the size of the decks. But Tim can go into all of the detailing, but I...
Mr. Kelly, what's the size of this unit?
The size of the unit is 2,062 square feet, Madam Chair. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath unit.
What are the plans, Mr. Bizani? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Breen from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We are speaking in support with design review. Our office did host a meeting, February 13th. That was widely attended. The applicant has worked with the abudders on the issues raised, such as the height, the rear decks, and the placement of the curb cut. We have, in fact, received one letter of opposition, but are supporting as long as they continue to work with the abudder.
I attended the abudders meeting, and the applicant worked very well with the abudders, took each issue, and really followed through with it. Now, today I'm finding out there is one person who's opposing it, but I want the board to know it's an eyesore, and it's a vacant building, so, you know, it's not really good neighborhood. So, I'm asking you to go to approve it with the proviso, then to continue working with the neighbor next door. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record, and I see that you have testimony. Why don't you just highlight what you mean to say?
Okay. Sure. My name is Sean Nealon, and along with my wife Kathy and son Joseph, we live next door. We're in the... As the attorney may have called it a muse house, we call it maybe a carriage house. It's a two-story building that is to the right of the proposed structure. We do actually have windows on that side of the building, in addition to skylights, so we are concerned about our privacy as it relates to our access to our upstairs living room and bedrooms. A major concern for us has been the issue of the back outside deck, again, because it would allow access to sort of be viewing into, we believe, viewing into our dwelling. And on top of that, we're concerned about the potential for outside gatherings and noise that would affect our, you know, ability to enjoy our property. You know, the deck is fairly large. I agree with the testimony before that there have been some reductions to it. I guess our preference would be that it be more of a balcony for the outside. I appreciate the fact that folks would want to be able to have direct sunlight come in and be able to view outside, but, you know, the idea of having a deck outside our upstairs living quarter and bedrooms is concerning to us. In addition, you know, the current building is about two stories. They're looking to go to 35 feet, something that we were certainly supportive of, with the idea of reducing it from the 37, which would have put the building out of character for the area. Our concern, however, is the number of floors within the building, and, you know, it's going from a two-and-a-half to a four-story building. We think that, you know, that additional height, additional space, will possibly relate to additional dwellers in the building, which will then relate to parking issues outside for our neighbors. The parking is less of an issue for us because we have parking on our side. However, I think if... When we've looked at the plans, and again, I'm not an architect, but they do allow for a curb cut that would allow for two parking spaces, we just find it difficult when we view it to say how you would actually get two cars in there to be able to move around in a convenient manner. More likely, the scenario from my perspective is that they would use one space and another parking space would be outside. It's a complaint that the neighborhood has heard from the large school building next door that there is parking inside, however, that the users use spaces out on the street. So, we are opposed to the plan as currently proposed. We would be happy to continue working with the architect and folks about looking to curb back the outside or eliminate the outside deck on the second floor, and be happy to take any questions at your...
I got a quick...
Thank you.
I got a quick question, sir. I'm just looking at Google Maps here. Does your property go all the way back, so you have no backyard? And do you share that... Do you share that driveway with the property next door to your right?
Sure. So, on the two carriage houses that are there, there are two of them. So, we have the front one...
Okay.
And there's one in the back.
It's hard to decipher that.
Sure. We share... We share an indoor space, parking spaces. So, there's a carriage house, parking, indoor parking, carriage house, and then behind it, for us and our neighbor, there are... There's an additional parking space. On the other side, there's parking for unit dwellers in the school building.
In the school building. Okay.
So, your building essentially goes pretty much the length of the lot?
Of the building. The building lot.
Of your lot?
Yeah, so...
Okay.
Well, not... Not... Not the lot. Our... Our home goes the exact length of the lot next door. It's sort of... Maybe it's a double lot?
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask, what was the height of the existing?
Thank you. So, Counselor, can you...
The three-story existing house?
About 32 feet.
Thirty-two feet?
To the peak.
So...
To the peak. To the peak.
Right. But you don't count that.
Yeah.
So, give me... The correct answer is, for the height of gabled roof, it's the mean distance between the eve and peak. So, what would that be?
I'd say 28 feet.
Okay. So, one question. It sounds like there is concern about privacy into the skylights. I mean, that seems to be perhaps the prevailing concern.
Yes, on that side.
Yes. So, how have you addressed that in any way? Or can you address that in some way?
No, Madam Chair, we have addressed that. We did go back out to the site after Mr. Nealon's concerns. We located all the windows on his property and his skylights, and on the abudding property. We moved windows and deleted windows, and showed that no windows on our building were aligned with theirs, and we emailed him these drawings, which I'd like to submit. We are also... The existing building is two feet from the property line. We're back another foot. And then the rear deck, which Mr. Nealon is talking about at the fourth floor, we pulled it back three feet and centered it in the rear of the building. That's on the rear elevation.
So, does Mr. Bizani have the plans that show the changes on that side of the property?
Yes. Mr. Bizani has an up-to-date set of plans.
I mean, one possibility on the deck, I can understand the neighbor's concern would be put shrubs or something on that right side to create a visual barrier.
A screen of sorts.
Yeah.
Really, there's no room.
Decent-sized deck, but that's for you to figure out. I have a question. Awning over the front door looks a little sort of out of place. How far does it extend over the sidewalk?
It extends...
Seems more like a commercial awning than a residential one.
Right. It extends two feet into the public way. It's about three feet deep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Oh, I've gone... I've done that already. We've gotten all the information. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 789-980-107 Pembroke Street. There is a companion case on building code, BOA 789-984-107 Pembroke Street. For 107 Pembroke Street, this is install a new roof deck and a new rear balcony. A new hatch was installed within the scope of the work. Locust is for the South End Landmarks District and a contribution structure to the historic district and designated as historic. Landmarks has approved the roof deck and hatch. The violation is Article 64, Section 9, conditional use for the new balcony above the first floor. There's quite a bit of building code. Are we moving forward on?
Yes.
I'm going to read into the record. Means of egress, 10009.2, headroom stairways shall have a minimum headroom clearance of 80 inches, measured vertically from the line connecting the edge of the nosing. Such headroom shall be continuous above the stairway to the point where the line intersects the landing below, one tread depth beyond the bottom riser. The minimum clearance shall be maintained, the full width of the stairway and landing. Means of egress on roof access, 100.913, stairways to roof in buildings four or more stories above grade plane, one stairway shall extend the roof surface unless the roof has a slope deeper than four units, vertical and 12 units horizontal, a 33% slope. In buildings without an occupied roof, access to the roof in the stop story shall be permitted by an alternating tread device. 10009.13.1, roof access where a stairway is provided to a roof access, the roof shall be provided... Roof shall be provided through a penthouse, complying with Section 1509.2. Means of egress, handrail continuity. Handrail gripping surfaces shall be in continuous without interruption by new posts or other obstructions. Handrail extensions, 1012.6, handrail extensions. Handrail shall return to wall, guard, or walking surface, or shall be continuous to the handrail of an adjacent stair, flight, or ramp run. Where handrails are not continuous between flights, the handrail shall extend horizontally at least 12 inches beyond the top riser and continue to the slope for the depth of one tread beyond the bottom riser. At ramps where handrails are not continuous between runs, the handrail shall extend horizontally above the landing, 12 inches minimum, beyond the top. In the bottom of the ramp runs, the extension in handrails shall be in the same direction of the stair, flights at stairways and at ramp runs at ramps. Now, one more. This is the open and protection, 1013.1. Guards shall be located along open-sided walking surfaces, including mezzanines, equipment platforms, stairs, ramps, and landings that are located more than 30 inches, measured vertically to the floor. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way, Boston, Mass. At a table.
Tell us about the building code violation.
Yes. If I may, I have submitted a summary of...
Madam Chair, I apologize, Counselor. I got to continue because there was another page, but it was not connected. The grade below any point within 36 inches horizontally to the edge of the open side, guard shall be adequate in strength and attachment. This is the last one. Safety glazing. Human impact loads. Individual glazed areas, including glass mirrors and hazardous locations as defined, shall comply. Hazardous locations following shall be considered. Specific hazardous locations requiring safety glazing. A swinging door, except glazing in fixed and siding panels of sliding door assemblies and panels in the siding and bifurled closet doors. Glazing in storm doors. Glazing in unframed swinging doors. Glazing in doors and enclosures for hot tubs, whirlpools, saunas, steam rooms, bathtubs, and showers. Glazing in any portion of the building while enclosing these compartments, where the bottom of the exposed edge of the glazing is less than 60 inches and above the standing surface. In glazing in an individual fixed or operable panel adjacent to a door, where the nearest exposed edge of the glazing is within 24 inches arc of either a vertical edge of the door or an enclosed position, where the bottom exposed edge of the glazing is less than 60 inches above the walking surface. That's it.
Okay. Now, you may proceed.
If I may, Madam Chair, the building code site is for... Triggered by the fact of a four-story building, triggering the state building code. If it was a three-story building, the hatch would be allowed as a matter of course, and is a common exit entry to the roof in numerous buildings in the South End. I would suggest the hatch as designed opens to the side, so there is continuous headroom compliance. The handrail, I've filed with Mr. Bizani a detailed photograph of the hatch. The railing is continuous to the deck. The deck has the usual fencing, and as noted in the filing of the appeal, cited Chapter 11 of the state building code, which deals with historic buildings, specifically Section 308, which states that on rehabilitation or new construction in a historic building, and this building is located in the South End Historic District and is a contributing building to the historic district, that there is no need to comply unless a building official deems a distinct life-safety hazard. Since this is a common approved hatch in numerous installations, I would respectfully suggest that it is compliant under Chapter 11, and that there is no distinct life-safety hazard.
Did you address the glazing issue and the human impact loads?
Yes. The glazing is a shatterproof plastic dome, and I would suggest that it, rather than glazing, it is an alternative substitute that would be compliant.
Okay. What do you think of that response, Mr. Bizani?
I have kindly held my tongue on two previous occasions when a document has been presented to us by RWS that has the name of Vernon Woodard, who's no longer there, hasn't been there for years. Number two, this document is quoting the eighth edition. We're in the ninth edition.
If I may, Mr. Bizani, the plans were filed under the eighth...
Okay. Okay. I will grant you that. The only issue that I have is the lack of continuation of the rail. And that is very easily solved. It could be a sliding rail, but we've done it. So, you have a rail over rail. It slides, and there's a post. It's a post, and it solves the problem. So, I'm going to make a motion to grant the building code relief for everything except the rail. I agree with the head... The headroom, there's plenty of headroom. But the lack of a rail that reaches at least 34-inch height going down is in fact a danger.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's get to the merits of the case.
The rear deck is... Requires a conditional use permit. It is the standard six-foot projection, supported by brackets. We had a community meeting, and there was no opposition. I have filed with the board a petition signed by a media abudders. We had in... Sent in... I sent a notice to the Pilot Block Association. They did not deem it necessary to have it placed on their agenda. There was the past president of the Pilot Block Association who did attend the Mums meeting, and he supported.
Okay. Any... How are the plans, Mr. Bizani? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did hold an abudders meeting. It was an opportunity for neighbors to have their concerns heard. It was not a controversial issue. Everyone in attendance was in support of the design. I've also reached out to the Pilot Block Neighbor Association, and I've received a letter on record from them saying that they support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the zoning relief request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? While you're up here, on the next project that you're on Westbrook Line, is that a building code relief too?
It is.
And same...
Same issues. Same plan examined.
Okay. In the meantime, I think we have something in between.
We do.
Okay.
Okay. John, just give me a second. Have some update your building code response.
Thank you.
So, it actively reflects what was on.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 788-942-134 St. Petal Street. This is a replacement that aligns the first floor pilot level and red deck. Violation is Article 41, Section 18. Rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Frank Dill, 185 Crescent Street in Woffa, Massachusetts. The project address is 134 St. Petal Street.
Tell us what's being proposed.
Yes. There is an existing rear yard deck on this property. It is in bad shape and falling apart. We would... It's an eyesore as well. We propose to replace that. It's currently supported by three steel columns. We'd like to maintain those same three columns and rebuild the deck, extending it 3'9" to the rear of the lot.
So, what would be the final... So what would be the final, the final dimensions of the proposed deck?
The proposed deck final dimensions would be twenty feet one inches wide, fourteen feet two inches deep, and it would leave a rear yard setback of thirteen feet. Twenty-five feet is the current rear yard setback required in this property. The reason for this request is, you know, my client's property is very small, the entire property is occupied by the house, parking, and a small planted area, so this is her sole outdoor space.
Single family?
Single family, yes.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Dr. Ann.
And the columns, the use of the existing columns makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Giselle Guerrero, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant the zoning relief requested. With BPDA Design Review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you. Calling next case, BOA seven eight three three nine nine one sixty-six Westbrook Line Street. There's also building code, BOA seven eight three four zero one one sixty-six Westbrook Line Street. This is to add a rear deck and roof deck, the violation to Article sixty-four, section nine, a balcony above the first floor is a conditional use. This is for building code, another long one, I'll have to read into the record. Chimneys and vents, vent termination, mechanical draft systems, or either forced or induced draft design shall comply with sections eight oh four point three through eight oh four point three seven. Horizontal terminations shall comply with the following requirements. Where located adjacent to walkways, the termination of mechanical draft systems shall be not less than seven feet above the level of the walkway. Eight zero four point three five, vertical termination shall comply with the following requirements. Where located adjacent to walkways, the termination of mechanical draft systems shall not be less than seven feet above the walkway. For roof stair headroom, one zero zero nine point two, stairway shall have a minimum headroom clearance of eighty inches and measured vertically from a line connecting the edge of the nosing, such headroom shall be continuous above the stairway to the point where the intersects the landing below. One tread depth beyond the bottom riser, the minimum clearance shall be maintained, the full width of the stairway and landing. Roof deck access, one zero zero nine point one three, stairway to roof in buildings four or more stories above grade plane, one stairway shall extend the roof surface unless the roof has a slope steeper than four units, vertical in twelve units horizontally in thirty-three percent slope. In buildings without the occupied roof, access to the roof from the top story shall be permitted to be by an alternating tread device. One zero zero nine point one three one, roof access where a stairway is provided to a roof access, the roof shall be provided through a penthouse complying with section one five zero nine point two. Handrail continuity, one zero one point four, handrail gripping surfaces shall be continuous without the interruption by newell posts or other obstructions. Handrail extensions, one zero one two point six, handrail shall return to the wall guard or the walking surface, or shall be continuous to the handrail of an adjacent stair flight or ramp run. Where handrails are not continuous between flights, the handrail shall extend horizontally at least twelve inches beyond the top riser and continue to the slope for the depth of one tread beyond the bottom riser. At ramps where handrails are not continuous between runs, the handrail shall extend horizontally above the landing, twelve inches minimum, beyond the top bottom of the ramp runs. The extension of handrails shall be in the same direction of the stair, flights and stairways and the ramp runs. And safety glazing, two four zero six point one, human impact loads. Individual glazed areas including glass mirrors in hazardous locations as defined in section two four zero six point four shall comply with section two point four zero six point one. The following shall, hazardous locations, two four zero six point four, the following shall be considered specific hazardous locations requiring safety glazing materials. Glazing in swinging doors except, except, except jolosies, section two four zero point four one. Name and address on the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way. With me is the managing partner of the project, Jim Keller.
Okay, so again, Mr. Bazani, do you have the information on the-
Again, it's exactly the same as the previous case. Make a motion to grant building code relief requested for everything but the handrail extension.
Second.
If I may, in reference to the vents, which separate from the hatch, the vent has been moved, we're not seeking relief under the state building code for the vent issue.
Okay, so you're not seeking relief for section two oh nine, chap, eight oh four point three?
Right.
Is that true, the other one as well?
Right.
So-
The sections dealing with the vent spacing, et cetera, we have moved the vent and cured the violation.
My question, is that true, the previous one?
Yes.
So, okay, Mr. Bazani, motion? There was a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's get to the meat of the matter here.
The rear deck is a conditional use permit. It is designed to project six feet out from the building and supported by brackets, the usual design approved by the board in numerous cases. Again, we had a, at the mayor's site meeting, there was no opposition, there was support, and I have filed a petition signed by a media debaters supporting the relief.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Dr. Ann.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to reiterate same type of support. We also held a debaters' meeting regarding this application, and the Neighborhood Association is also in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant the zoning relief requested.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling BOA seven nine 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 three eight seventy-two Peterborough Street. There's a companion case, BOA seven nine 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 three seven seventy-six Peterborough Street. This is a change of occupancy to include wireless communication facility. The applicant proposes to construct a new wireless facility on the roof and facade of an existing building. The applicant will be installing twelve panel antennas together with supporting equipment and proposed eight-foot high fence. All work will be done pursuant to the plans. The violation is Article eighty-six, section six, any antenna in a residential district is a conditional use. The other case is also of the same purpose and violation. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Daniel Glishman, Prince Lobel Thai, One International Place, Suite thirty-seven hundred, Boston, Massachusetts, here on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast.
I just have to ask you one question.
Yes.
Was there a wireless facility already proposed for this site maybe three or four years ago that was denied by this board?
I don't, I'm not aware of a wireless site that was denied by this board. I believe AT&amp;T is, so this is a row of buildings, all, one building owned by the Peterborough Housing Association. I believe there is already wireless on the other end of the building, but I'm not aware of a proposal that was rejected by this board.
Can you tell us what's being proposed?
T-Mobile is proposing to install twelve new panel antennas on the roof of the existing building at seventy-two and seventy-six Peterborough Street, three of which will be facade-mounted to the existing penthouse. Those three antennas we had initially proposed to be facade-mounted on the side of the building. So actually, if you, if you're looking at the photo sims that I've handed out, page three and four, you can see the existing side of the brick building. We had initially proposed to install three panel antennas there, however, after some feedback from the community and further design review, we have opted to move them back up onto the roof and over twenty feet away from the roof edge. They're going to be very difficult to see. The one piece of the installation that you can see from this viewpoint is one of the faux chimneys that will house three antennas. It's a ten-foot height, three foot by eight foot faux chimney that will hold three antennas. If you are just going along on the photo sims and you get to pages six and seven, you can see the, just barely, the tops of the antennas. Those will be the only antennas that will be very, just minimally visible. They're actually difficult to even make out on this photo sim, and the sim is slightly inaccurate in that the antennas are shown to reach just to the top of the penthouse, but they'll actually be set down just beneath the white cornice, so they'll be even less visible than currently shown. And then if you just continue to flip through the photo sims, on pages eight and nine, you will see the best view to look to see the two faux chimneys that will hold the other nine antennas. The larger faux chimney to the left will be hosting six antennas, and the more narrow chimney to the right will host three antennas. We believe this installation is consistent with the desire of this board to try and have minimal visual impact from these installations. It's installed in a relatively tall building to service the residential community nearby, and I'm happy to answer any questions by the board.
So if the tall buildings going on in Boylston Street don't work for this?
We, again, we've conducted a comprehensive alternative site analysis which was submitted to the board as part of our application package. The site acquisition agent has reviewed the surrounding large buildings, but really the idea is to service these streets, and it's difficult to get in between all the tall brick buildings for direct sort of line of sight contact.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Dr. Ann, for my education, who is the building owner?
It's Peterborough Housing Authority, which I believe is a subset of the Boston Housing Authority.
What is the material used on the faux chimneys?
It's a fiberglass material, and then we are proposing to paint them with a vertical seam siding to match the existing penthouse. Obviously, that's subject to BPDA Design Review and any comments by this board.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Giselle Guerrero, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Jeff, is there some, one person at the BRA who does all these antennas or sits front of-
Matt Martin does.
Okay, so aggressive design would be a plea.
Calling next case, calling BOA seven nine four four five two, two forty-five to two forty-nine East Street. This is a change of occupancy from two stores, Restaurant Thirty-Six A and four apartments to one store Restaurants Thirty-Six A and five apartments. Well, this is an existing condition for many years. We reframed rear wall to accept new six-foot sliding door. Violation to Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, section eight, usable open spaces insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, I'm Frank McGinnis, Levon Love's Lane in Woburn. I'm here representing Jason DiMano, the owner of the properties. What we're seeking to do is to try to correct a oversight when two forty-nine and two forty-seven were legalized. They accidentally left out two forty-five, which was an existing three-family, I mean, three-unit apartment building at that time. It's been that way for about thirty years.
Okay, so within the block of two forty-five, two forty-seven, and two forty-nine, how many total units will there be?
Pardon me?
Two forty-five, two forty-seven, and two forty-nine, there'll be two apartments in each unit?
Aye.
In each building, at each address?
Right now, there's one store and five apartments.
Mm-hmm.
Or it's supposed to be one store and five apartments legalized. Right now, it's only marked out as two stores and four apartments.
And what is the size of the apartments? Square footage?
Oh, each one varies probably about anywhere from five hundred and forty to about six hundred and forty square feet.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Dr. Ann.
Any questions from the board?
So when, when was the initial work done that caused this property to be left out?
When was the initial work?
Yeah, you mentioned that everything else was approved except for this property. When was that?
Ah.
Oh, when did it start? Ninety-three?
Yeah, nineteen ninety-three about. That was when the store was legalized as a store EBA deli and the four apartments. But Mr. DiMano's father had, who was relatively ill at that time, was mainly so delighted that he got the store because he was doing it for his three sons, that he accidentally overlooked the way the deed was set up on the property because it's all on one deed. You can't sell one building without selling the whole setup.
And has taxes been paid on this as a residential unit?
Yes, commercial and residential.
Taxes has been paid as two stores and four apartments, okay? Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Pardon me?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support. We did hold a debaters' meeting, we've received no concerns about this project, and indeed it has been, this has been a use for many years. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore from City Councilor Ed Flynn's office. We echo the mayor's statements and are in support of this.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition on this project? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
It's now ten forty, I'm gonna call the ten thirties. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for ten thirty? Counselor address?
Sixty-three, sixty-five, Warland Street.
For the record, calling BOA seven nine six three four one, sixty-three to sixty-five, Warland Street. Name and address for the record, please.
More than Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, Business Russell Fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass., four two one oh nine. We're here today to request a deferral of this matter as we need to go back and do some more meetings with the community.
May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date?
May twenty-second.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Two. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for ten thirty? Bearing none, we'll go back to the, going to the next case. Calling BOA seven eight six two five four six sixty-two East Fifth Street. This is to renovate an existing three-family resident and expand living space on each floor and red decks for units two and three, and roof decks access from the penthouse for the third floor only. The violation is Article sixty-eight, section thirty-three, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article twenty-seven S, section five, it's in the IPOD applicability. Article sixty-eight, section twenty-nine, the roof structure restricted district. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney, the Adams and Ramsey with the business address-
Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Ramsey with the business address of 350 West Broadway. And with me is Architect Doug Stefanoff and property owner to my right.
Tell us what's being proposed?
Madam Chair, what we have here is an existing three-family. There have been a number of violations eliminated. The restricted roof structure violation has been eliminated. There's no structure going on the roof as a result of the community process. Additionally, there is no parking violation. It's an existing three-family that's remaining an existing three-family. The only violation, or rather citation, that we're here to present before you is IPod.
Rear yard, because they're mentioned regulations for rear yard?
No, the rear yard violation has been removed. The rear yard is less than 15 feet. It's 16.8. Down from the existing is under 10. 10 feet.
So really, let the record reflect that, with the testimony, the only violation is the IPod applicability. Tell us what's being proposed?
The, it's the, if you look at the first page, distributor, the second page, rather, at A 0.01, you can see the existing building in the upper quadrant of the paper, and it shows a rear setback in the middle on the second floor of 10 feet. On the upper portion of the first floor and the third floor, it shows a setback of approximately 16 and a half or 17 feet. And that's where the proponent is seeking to extend that existing setback across the rear of the building and then push it out again an additional three feet, which would be a total of 16.8 feet from the rear yard. 15 feet is what's required.
Let's talk about the IPod applicability.
Yes.
So all the applicant is proposing to expand living space on each floor?
Yes.
And how is that being accomplished?
It's being accomplished by the, again, there's an existing extension that isn't the full width of the building. It's squaring off that addition and then an additional couple of feet further. So each, so each floor will be a two-bedroom, two-bath condo unit for homeownership.
Tell us about the decks?
There was a roof deck, and there are existing decks and existing egress that are being removed as a result of the community process.
So no rear decks?
There's no rear decks.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to on record in opposition. We have held a couple of butters meetings on this project, and though the development team has made concessions to eliminate the rear yard violation in the headhouse, we understand neighbors still have concerns about the size of the building, you know, shadow effects and the proximity to their buildings. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore with City Councilor Ed Flynn's office. We echo the mayor's statements. We've received numerous correspondence from neighbors and abutters, also neighborhood organizations in opposition to this, and we are opposed to this.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Councilor at Large, Michael Flaherty. Council stands with the neighbors in strong opposition to this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dave Vittarini, on behalf of City Councilor at Large, Michelle Wu. We'd also like to go on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez from City Councilor at Large, Anissa Sibby George's office. The council also like to go on record in opposition.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ronald Claude from Council Ariana Pressley's office, and we would like to go on the record as opposing.
Are you representing an elected official?
No, I'm a butter. My name's Stephen McCarthy.
Hold on, hold on. Now, all of you are in opposition?
Yes.
Okay, can we get a count on how many people are in opposition? That's two, four, six, seven, eight, so that's 10 people in opposition. Please, if you could put your name and address on the record, and as I had said earlier, if you have new information, add that, but otherwise, just put your name on the record, okay? Go ahead.
My name's Stephen McCarthy. I'm a butter at the rear of the property, 313 Emerson Street. My wife and I are in opposition to the project. We just feel it's too big and too close. My neighbor, the Mulligan family at 311 Emerson Street, who couldn't attend today, also is in very much opposition to the project, and we did ask for a deferral for that reason, but the builder declined that. That's that.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this project. My name is Heather Lance. I live at 311 Emerson Street in a tall building that faces this project. Three of the five windows in my unit directly face the proposed project. We have a couple of objections to the project. One, to clarify something that the gentleman said. He said that the current structure is going from less than 10 feet from the property line to 16.8 feet from the property line, but that's not entirely accurate. The 10 feet is a current stair egress that was built sometime in the last bunch of years. We're not sure whether it was a legal construction or not. The actual building structure, this project would expand, so it would expand it back further toward the back property line. It would expand it, part of it, to the right, so closer to another side of butter, and it would expand it upwards. Part of it would expand up by one floor, and part of it would expand up by three floors. So where there's currently ground and open space, it would go to three floors. We believe that it's a dramatic expansion of the footprint and density of the current property in a neighborhood that is already experiencing problems with this. As Stephen mentioned, it will shade the decks and yards of at least five property owners in the area, many of them longtime residents. This project will significantly reduce open space in the neighborhood. Those of us on the rear side of our building currently look out into open space for the most part, and trees, and instead, we'll be looking into the bedrooms of people less than 20 feet away. Finally, we would appeal to the stated purpose of the South Boston IPod to help preserve the neighborhood character, quality of life for residents. Lastly, to conclude, we are not obstructionists. We are very happy to see the project and the property renovated, but we feel that further changes are necessary to reduce the negative impacts on longtime neighbors and abutters. We think we can come to agreement and find something that we could support, but I think it will take some further changes to the plans as they currently are. As they currently are, I stand in opposition. Thank you.
What you heard so far is that the building as proposed would be too close to the abutters, that it will be expanded not only upwards but on the side?
And back.
And rear. It would impact a minimum of five abutters, and there's an open space impact.
Yes, the five abutters is just people who will see, who currently have yards and decks who would see increased shade.
Okay, so that's what's been covered so far. The rest of the people online, in line, please give us new information. Otherwise, put your name and address on the record, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Heilig. I live at 311 Emerson Street in Unit 15. I've lived there for 20 years. And to add to what Stephen and Heather have said, the project is proposing to add several bedrooms and, without adding any kind of parking. So I stand in opposition to it because we are already in a very serious parking shortage in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Patricia Wallace, Unit Number 19 at 311 Emerson, and I have nothing new to add, but I'm in opposition of the board.
Thank you.
Ruth Scully Hall, Unit 2, 311 Emerson Street, in opposition.
Thank you.
Kathleen Curly, Unit 9, 311, in opposition. Thank you.
Natalie Butler, 291 Emerson Street, in opposition. He's made no contingency for parking, but increases the occupancy, doesn't address the congestion. He encroaches visibly and physically on the open spaces. Big box effect. It's a very ugly structure that everybody will be stuck with, and it will affect the current abutters and neighbors' property values going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Butler, 291 Emerson Street. I've been a resident, I've lived at that residency for over 59 years. I stand in opposition to this project because it's the size, the congestion, there's no parking, and there's just far too many decks. There's, he's alleging three decks in his proposal. We've just had four decks installed over the last two years. This would be seven decks in under three years. It's just way too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Vale, 311 Emerson, Unit Number 4, and I stand in opposition.
Thank you.
There's plenty, lack of parking is becoming a big issue in that part of South Boston now, and so, thank you.
Debbie Van Atten, 309 Emerson Street, Number 6, and I'm in opposition to the project.
Thank you. Quick response, Counselor?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. A lot of the opposition that we've heard today is from 309, 311 Emerson Street, which is a pre-existing, non-conforming, just below a high-rise at 57 feet, less than 10 feet off my client's rear yard. And we feel respectfully that with their lack of open space in their rear yard shouldn't detract our client to be able to build what's within the zoning code. They, we, it's over 15 feet required. We have over 600 square feet of open space, which is what's required. Through the neighborhood process, there's been concessions to, and taken into the design and neighborhood feedback. We have presented a shadow study with little or no additional burden on the neighbors. In fact, a minor shadow on our client's own land. I guess in sum, the opposition is related to open space on my client's property, which shouldn't be allowed to make up for the absence of open space that would have been required on their property.
Okay.
And we also submitted 10 letters of support. There are 10 people in opposition of all abutters within 100 feet, 150 feet, excuse me.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
What is denied?
Is there a second? So there's a motion on the table to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Calling next case, calling BOA 568-241-246, Boston Street. This is an extension of living space into the basement for units one, two, and three, and the reduction of an as-built exterior deck. Violation to Article 66, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record.
Hello, Madam Chair and Chair. My name's Dermot Doyen. I'm an attorney, Sashuna Simra, and to my right is Doug George, the proponent.
What's being proposed?
Sorry.
Tell us what's being proposed.
Okay, previously, this actual building had designated space from the previous owner, permitted for the basement. When the proponent took over the building, he wanted to decrease the size of the decks from 40 feet to 16 feet. This was reviewed and by the BBTA, and it got approval. We're just here back today to get the zoning board approval.
So this is for extension of the living space into the basement?
This, the living space actually was approved by the previous land, previous person who owned the building.
My name is Douglas George. I'm the owner of 32 Mayo Street, Dorchester. The permit for the building that is shown in the picture over there was purchased out of bankruptcy court, and the only plans I had that had been approved by ISD had to be changed. The building wasn't buildable. The dimensional regulate, dimensional size of the building did not change at all. However, I went back through the BPDA process for design review, and in the process of that, we reduced the size of the side decks, and we used the existing approved space in the basement and made it living space.
So tell us about the living space into the basement. Tell us what the floor-to-ceiling height is and what the use of that space is. Is it bedrooms? What is it?
The intent of the use will be to put bedrooms in there. When the building was approved through the first ISD, through the first EBA process, the units on the first floor were noted as being small, smaller than 750 square feet. And a comment that came out of that was that the unit size needed to be increased. The way that that was increased was to go into the basement, and it makes the...
It is the issue that a project was approved somehow during design review. An issue that was not before the board, that is, living space into the basement?
Correct.
Was developed as a means of solving a unit script footage problem.
Yes.
So, but how do you do that? I mean, that can't be done.
Well, no, so that's a, that's a new building. So ceiling height in the basement is nine feet. It's got full-size egress windows.
I understand, but the use of living space in the basement is not an idea.
Right, so what we did is we came back before the board at the, at the recommendation of Inspeccional Services. We got a temp CO for partial use of the building. First four units were held open. We went back through the community process. We had multiple community meetings. We submitted documents from every one of the abutters. We submitted...
Tell us about the, about the project. I mean, I think we're having a difficult time understanding this.
Okay.
So talk about the project itself.
Could I, could I have those drawings back, and I'll talk it through for you?
Yes, please. So did this go through an Article 80? What process did it go through?
No, this is a small project. It's nine units.
It's nine units, okay?
Yeah, if, I'll take these...
And only on three units are you requesting extension to the basement?
Correct.
And what would it increase the size of those units from and to?
It takes them from approximately 700 feet to 975 feet.
To 975 feet, and they're connected internally?
Yes.
Okay. And the floor-to-ceiling height is how much?
Nine feet.
Nine feet? And the bedroom count will increase it by one bedroom?
Per unit, yes.
One bedroom per unit?
Yes.
So the total is? And what were the violations before? Because now we're only seeing it as violations on these, on these three units, but initially, there must have been more, more violations on the initial project?
As I said, I did not permit the initial project. The project was fully permitted, and then the person lost it in bankruptcy. I bought it out of bankruptcy. I had no cooperation from the former architect or any of the professionals because they had not been paid apparently for their work.
Okay.
So I had to start from scratch. The building that was approved by ISD and BPDA, or BRA at the time, does not even remotely coordinate with it. It was not buildable. Like, this, this shows some sort of gable roof, and this shows a mansard roof. The decks extended the full length of the side of the building.
So is this your plans or the old plans?
The old plans that were approved.
Okay.
So then I went in to BPDA and ISD, and created a new set of plans.
Okay.
So instead of having those decks running the full length of the building, we reduced the decks and made what I think is a much better building. This is, exists.
Okay.
So this is what was previously approved.
Okay, so let's go to what you're proposing then.
Okay.
So these three units, using that photograph, or if you have your revised plans, tell us where those three units are.
On the first floor, on each of the upper floors, there is two units per floor, side by side. On the first floor, there's a right, a left, and a rear.
Okay.
And so there's three units on the first floor. This may help if I show you the floor plans. So what happened was, after we'd done all the BPDA reviews, I can send these up to you if you'd like. This is the as-built basement plan, and shows the units. This might be very helpful, because it can show...
Mr. Bazani?
What this enables us to do is market these units as condominiums. Otherwise, they're not, they're rental units. And homeowner occupied is what everyone in the building wants and the community wants.
There's no question about that, and...
Mr. George, when was this permitted originally?
This was originally permitted in 2010, and then through the Permit Extension Act, I executed the permit in 2014, I believe.
I remember this. I know this property, it's already been done, previously.
This is, this is what you look at.
Right. It's right next to the charter school.
It's right next to the charter school.
Yeah.
It's short of the, you know, it's just, this is built exactly to the dimensions shown in the original permit.
Okay. Uh, and is everything with the bedrooms in the basement, is everything good with the, uh, window wells and everything else?
Each of the three, each of the three units, um, have their own internal stair connecting to their space in the basement. Uh, the basement plan does not show any window wells, which would therefore lead one to believe that the windows are, what's the height, Doug?
The full-size windows, they're six-foot-high window, or 58, I'm sorry, 66 inches?
What's the sill height?
Oh, the sill height is, uh, 14 inches.
And the grade height corresponds to that?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's basically, you know, the window walkout.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. We did hold an abutters meeting in which there was a lot of support for the project. Uh, we've also received a letter of support from the condo association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jill McGeekren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
On the last case, 9:30, calling BOA 792-516-202, L Street. This is a gut renovation of an existing three-family dwelling and reconstruct an existing rear porch. Extend living space for unit one from the ground floor to the basement. Remove aluminum siding and install new siding on the exterior. Violate Article 68, Section 27S-5. It's in the IPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, Mass. With me is Mitchell Kessler from Edgewater Properties, which is the owner of the property. Um, this is a complete gut renovation of an existing three-family dwelling that will remain a three-family dwelling. Uh, one of the violations was the roof deck accessibility by a spiral staircase at the rear deck. However, as a result of the abutter meeting and community process, both the roof deck and that rear stair have been removed from the plans and revised plans have been submitted. So the sole, uh, issue before you today is the applica, applicability of the IPod, um, and an IPod permit. The property otherwise fully complies with all of the underlying dimensional requirements of Article 68. Um, it's an existing three-family in a multifamily residential district.
Tell us about unit one, um, an extension into the basement.
Yes, so, uh, unit one is being extended into the basement to add approximately 700 additional square feet of living space, which still keeps the building below the maximum FAR of 2.0. Um, the existing, uh, living area is 3,510 square feet. With the extension of the living space into the basement, the gross floor area is 4,021, um, as against a maximum allowable of 4,760. So we're still about 500 feet below the maximum FAR.
The sill height in the basement?
The ceiling height is 7.6, as shown on the plans.
And the sill height?
Sill height, sill height of the windows. So the windows we're proposing in the basement are to keep the existing, um, make no change, and the basis for that is, um, we are installing a sprinkler system in accordance with NFPA 13R, um, and the section of the building code, Section 1029.1, which sets forth the requirements for, uh, emergency escape and rescue openings in the basement. There's an exception, um, uh, for buildings that are equipped throughout with an automatic sprinkler system in accordance with 13R, um, and an R2 occupancy.
Okay. Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are accurate.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We did hold an abutters meeting for this project, and there was opposition to, uh, the roof deck. The, uh, developer agreed to remove that, so at this point we are in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore from City Councilor Ed Flynn's office. We would also like to go on record as support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Not motion to grant the request. Uh, Counselor, you would send me PDFs of, uh, was it exactly this on or?
Yes, of the revised plans, but we also filed two full sets of the revised plans with the roof deck removed with our plans examiner, Lisa Hong, at ISD.
Okay, uh, what she should do is, uh...
I will do it again.
Just make sure that you have a...
Directly to the board? Sure thing.
Oh, oh, just follow next one.
Okay.
Did we get a motion? Are they all set? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling next case, calling BOA 787-263-706 to 712 Huntington Ave. This is change occupancy to include a microblading body art existing nail salon at 712 Huntington Ave. The violation is Article 59, Section 15, microblading and body art is a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Caitly. I'm, uh, the owner of Nail Salon at 712 Huntington Ave, Boston, Mass. And I would like to add in microblading service done at existing nail salon.
And is this a, um, a separate booth you need for this?
Uh, no.
It's just a use within the nail salon?
Inside nail salon, yes.
Okay. What is microblading?
Uh, microblading is sim, similar like eyebrow tattoo.
Oh, okay. Oh, and you need a special permit for that? I guess it's a tattoo. It's body art. Okay. How are the plans?
We only do microblading, just eyebrow.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are accurate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Gisele Barrero, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 790-018, 5 Crockett Avenue. This is to construct a new 16-foot by 25-foot, a three, three sto, one-story addition on the back of the house. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record.
Robert Flynn, 5 Crockett Ave.
Is anybody else gonna be speaking?
Uh, John Sackel, contractor.
Okay, tell us what's being proposed.
It's a 16 by 25.
16 by 25-foot addition?
Yes, one story, one story, yes.
One-story addition on the, and what's the use of the space?
Uh, living room, bedroom.
Okay. And, um, okay, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are accurate, rather modest.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. Uh, I held an onsite abutter, I'm sorry, not an onsite. I held an abutters meeting for this project. Uh, we had about four or five abutters show up. They all expressed their support for the project, uh, and the proponents also have the support of the City Grove Civic Association. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Councilor Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Councilors, go on record in support.
Good morning, Chairman. Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi George, and we echo the sentiments and we support this project also. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Fair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set with that proviso. We're gonna take a 10-minute break, and we will, uh, resume at 11:20. Conversations are taken outside of the room. Uh, in conformance with the open meeting law, this, uh, meeting is being livestreamed. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna call deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30 one more time. Okay? Hearing none. I'm gonna go to the next three cases, their companion cases. BOA 769-979-30 Milton Avenue, BOA 7914-78, 50 to 52 Peaceville Road, BOA 791-477-15 to 15A Whitman Street. This is 30 Milton Ave. This is a subdivided lot to three small apostles and relocate new single-family structure. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, lot, lot, yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, rear yard is insufficient. This is for 50 to 52 Peaceville to extend living space to the attic space for newly constructed two-family residential dwelling. The violation is Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And this is for 15 to 15A Whitman Street. We're doing all three together, correct? As long as we're on the same page? Okay.
Sure.
This is attic bathroom. It was constructed on the opposite side of the attic, which was the original architectural drawing show. In addition, a walk-in closet was constructed. Violation is Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article 65, Section 9, the building height, number of stories, is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott Quiltean Miller, 28 State Street, Suite 802, here in Boston. With me, to my immediate left is Denisha McDonald, uh, and to my far left is Kevin McGuire, both of Oxbow Urban LLC, who's the, uh, property owner and project appellant. Um, we have provided a brief handout just to summarize what we're here in front of the board for this morning and, uh, try and make it a little bit easier to digest. Um, these are all, three projects are part of DND's Neighborhood Housing Initiative Program. Each property is located in the Dorchester Neighborhood Zoning District and the 2F 5,000 sub-district. Um, we, we actually were in front of the board for all three of these projects back in October of 2016, um, but subsequent to permitting and initial construction, uh, of these projects, um, we're back seeking permission for some small changes to the approved projects from 2016. Um, if Madam Chair would like, I can go through the zoning variances for each. Um...
On 30 Milton?
Yes.
Uh, speak to us what the issue is, and, and can you tell us which is 30 Milton on this map?
30, 30 Milton is the top, is the top parcel.
And tell us, uh, what the issue is there?
Sure. So 30 Milton was actually approved in 2016, but it was approved for, to be a subdivided lot, um, into two lots. That's why you see the two lots on that, on that, um, the summary in front of you. Um, but during, after the building permit issuance, they went and did a site visit and talked to the rear abutters, who, uh, this has been a vacant lot for some time. Their rear abutters were, had actually been using some of this lot for their own purposes, for walkways and, and a fence and things of that nature. So subsequent to those discussions and the approval, um, they have since carved out some of those rear parcels, as you can see, that's outlined, um, on the, on the map in front of you. They've carved out, uh, and provided, deeded over some of this parcel to the rear abutters because they've been using them for a long period of time. Because of that...
Yeah.
They've gone from a, uh, a subdivided, uh, lot with two attached single-family dwellings to now just one single-family dwelling, um, as a result of, of that.
And what's, so, so the only, only thing that's happening then on Milton Ave is that 30, 30 is just going to be built? There's not gonna be a companion building?
Correct. That is correct. And it's a single-family dwelling now. The, the variances, um, we actually, for, for lot area insufficient, we did receive relief in 2016. The lot's actually gotten bigger, um, because we're not subdividing anymore. 5,000 square feet is required. 4,332 square feet is what we have left after this, um, uh, these carve-outs in the rear. Rear yard insufficient. Um, again, we received that in 2016, but it's gotten less of a rear yard because of those carve-outs. 20 feet's required. Uh, we are proposing 14 feet 6 inches. Um, and front yard insufficient. 15 feet is required, and we're proposing 12 feet, again, because the building has been moved up a little bit to accommodate the rear abutters.
Okay, and then, uh, let's go to Peaceville.
Sure. 50, both 50 Peaceville and 15 Whitman are the, are very similar. Um, for 50 Peaceville, what the proposal is, is to extend the living space into the attic to provide an extra bedroom and, uh, additional living space. So for 50 Peaceville, um, the only variance that's required is floor area ratio. Um, when we were approved for that project in 2016, we did not need FAR. It's .5. Um, we've, we're adding approximately 969 square feet, and so that puts us at an FAR of .63.
So is this, this is a two-family?
Um, yes, correct. 50 Peaceville is a two-family.
And so it's an extra bedroom up there? What is it?
Correct, an extra bedroom.
So how many bedrooms in that second unit?
Three. Would be three.
And same thing for Whitman?
15 Whitman is same thing, extending living space into the attic. Again, 969 square feet. Um, for this one, we again require floor area ratio. Um, it's a smaller lot, so the floor area ratio is .79, where .5 is required, uh, as maximum. We did receive in 2016 a variance for FAR, but it was only for .57, so we're increasing the variance as a result. Um, we also need building height. Um, it's for stories. Because of extending the living space into that attic, it, it technically is now a three-story building and not a two-and-a-half-story building. Um, two-and-a-half stories is allowed, and we're proposing three.
And again, what's the use in the attic?
Uh, again, it's a, a, um, a ba, a walk-in closet, a bathroom, and a single...
Same use.
Same use.
So it's, uh, bedroom as well as some living space. It's a, it's the exact same home, so it's a two-family. The upper unit now has three bedrooms as opposed to two.
Right.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are accurate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We support this project. We support all three of these projects, and I've also received letters of support from the TNT group in that area. Thank you.
We have provided that letter as well, Madam Chair, uh, for the, for the board's file.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Rodriguez from City Councilor at Lodge, Denise Sabi George's office. The councilor also would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jawan Skeens, representing District 4, City Council President Andrea Campbell. We received a, a letter of support from TNT, as well as Don from, uh, Don Association. We would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ryan Leonard, Department of Neighborhood Development, uh, Neighborhood Housing Division. Like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA. We probably don't need it, right? So just, just can, motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's for the record for all three projects.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Case calling BOA 776-842-36Y, Vernon Street. This is a partially finished basement in both units. The basement at 36 Y Vernon, the front unit, will have a finished family room along with laundry and utility areas. The basement at 38 Y Vernon will have a finished family room and bathroom along with utilities. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Joe DiCipio, uh, 13 Teresa Terrace in High Park, Mass. I'm here to represent the owners of 36 and 38 Y Vernon Street.
Tell us what's being proposed. Oh, go ahead.
My name is Jessica Gessfer, and I'm in 36 Y Vernon.
We're seeking permission to finish the basements in each of the units, um, which includes family room space in laundry in one, and a family room with, um, a bathroom and utility area in both units, actually.
And this is, this is a two-family?
It's a two-family, yes.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Uh, seven foot, uh, seven foot six.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are accurate, uh, or...
Uh, they better be accurate.
Accurate, inaccurate, inaccurate.
Okay, is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Dan Murphy, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Calling the next three cases, calling BOA 791-768-1208C, VFW Parkway. Case BOA 791-775-1208D, VFW Parkway. Case BOA 791-773-1208R, R VFW Parkway. This is for 1208C. This is erect a new three-story, 18-unit residential building with off-street parking garage, partially below grade. This will be one of two dwelling units, dwellings located on the same lot. The violation is Article 56, Section 18, multifamily dwelling is conditional. Article 56, Section 40, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 56, Section 40, two or more dwellings located on the same lot. Article 56, Section 39, off-street parking is insufficient. This is for 1208D, VFW Parkway. This is erect a new three-story, 42-unit residential building with off-street parking garage, partially below grade. This will be one of two dwellings located on the same lot. The violation is Article 56, Section 15, multifamily dwelling is conditional. Article 56, Section 40, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 56, Section 40, two or more dwellings located on the same lot. Article 56, Section 39, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 56, Section 39, off-street loading is insufficient. This is for 1208R, VFW Parkway. This is a subdivision of existing lot of 270 Baker Street of 124,720 square feet, 2.86 acres, into two separate lots. New lot A is to be 53,644 square feet and 1.2 acre, and Lot B is to be 71,076 square feet and 1.6 acres. The violation is Article 56, Section 39, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, Attorney at McDermott Quilty and Miller, representing 270 Baker Street LLC, the property owner. With me to my right is Rick Olstein, who's one of the owners of the property, our project architect Linda Nishempton to my far right, and Tom Maistros, the project consultant. He's seated just behind me. It probably makes sense to just go through these in reverse order. The first one is the subdivision of the existing lot known at the beginning of this process as 270 Baker Street, which was, is suggested as the 124,720 square foot parcel. The following two cases are the subdivision into two parcels to create a total of 60 residential units. The project started out in June of 2014. We have had eight different community meetings, both IAG and self-organized community meetings in the neighborhood over that period of time.
So just refresh us our memory. So the parcel goes from VFW to across the street from Catholic Memorial?
Yes, correct. It's just across the bridge from Catholic Memorial.
Okay, so it's an L-shaped parcel?
It's a, almost a square.
Because it has a VFW address, so...
And the vehicle, this is what would happen in the process of the community meetings. There was a lot of pushback to using Baker Street as an access point to the property, although that was the official address. As a result of these various meetings, we agreed to make the focus from VFW, which would provide that these streets nearby would not be suffering, if you will, from people coming and going from this development.
So there would be an extra curb cut on VFW? Or, so tell us how it would link altogether?
The property is currently accessed off of VFW Parkway across an easement, across two parcels that are in front of it. So this parcel does not actually front on the Parkway, but it is accessed off the Parkway. It would be continued to be accessed the same way. There is no vehicular access off of Baker Street.
And that was done through the process. People were very concerned about because of CM and the activities on the playing fields and the like. So after a number of means, we agreed to do away with the Baker Street entrance and come and go from VFW Parkway, which people found more palatable.
So this would be which lot? It would be, thank you. So how would the, it would work through the rear of the Savers lot? Is that what it is? Which lot is it that it would connect with?
No, it's the parcel next door to Savers.
Next door to Savers?
Yeah, one property north-
Oh, it's the residential, it already has that residential component to it.
There is a residential component, but actually not on this parcel. This parcel has a small office building and a relatively newer medical building that was just built. And then there's, we have an existing office building in the back of the parcel, which will remain on one part of the subdivided land. The balance of the subdivided land is proposed for 60 new residential units.
Okay. Now we have our bearings.
Yes, ma'am. And again, a lot of this came about through these many meetings we have with the community. And just for an example of what changes were made, when this started out in 2014, the proposal was for 156 units.
We just want to know back today.
Okay. And today, today it said 60, which resulted from our last IAG meeting where we had Catholic Memorial on board, the Parkway Little League on board, we had a bunch of neighbors and IAG members on board for that number, and the parking which was provided, and the entry and exit on VFW Parkway. So we are here with full support of the IAG. We had a BRA board vote in September, BPDA board vote in September. I know BPDA is represented here. And we had numerous meetings with ONS, with Council O'Malley, and with BPDA.
So this is a CC1 district and a residential district? Is that what it's split between?
Where, these were cited CC1.
They were all cited as CC1?
Yes, ma'am.
I believe residence is a conditional use, I believe.
Yeah, okay. So we see that. Tell us about the off-street parking and loading requirements, because that's a violation?
We don't think so. We don't think it is, but we are cited for it. There's ample parking provided in both of these buildings, as well as guest parking, as well as the property owner-
Explain to us then what is, what is being provided?
Can I speak to them? We have, we're providing 90 parking spaces within our new subdivided parcel. Of those 90, 15 at grade and 75 under the building structure.
And then you should mention parking in the front.
And then there is additional parking existing on the commercial, subdivided commercial lot. However, that's right.
Which is owned by the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what if he sells? What if he sell?
Then that parcel has the parking required to meet the zone.
It has, but what's the, isn't in West Roxbury, is it 1.5 per dwelling unit? Parking is 1.5?
Correct.
That's what we're providing, 90 units for 60 units and spaces for 60. 70 spaces for the three-story, for 30 some odd thousand square for commercial.
Yep.
So for a total of 160, one of two different, will be two different parcels.
Okay, now tell us about the loading.
Well, we've provided a pull-in at the end of our drive to function as a, as a loading going into the two basements of the building.
Okay.
So it's open air.
And conformity with existing building alignment? I guess that's because of the subdivision and all the, everything else that was done to make this work. And then two or more dwellings on the same lot, okay? And tell us about the number of, what the breakdown on the units are and the square foot, feet of each, oh...
We have five one-bedroom units and 55 two-bedroom units.
No family units? No. Okay. And the square footage, the about, the average square footage for the one, two bedrooms?
We range from 1,000-
Speak up one.
Sorry. 1,050 typically for the two-bedroom and 750 for the one-bedroom.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate. I do have a question. In fact, is this intended to be modular?
No.
And then it does modular. Everything's thicked out, right? Yeah. I think in all the time you've been here. Is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. Obviously, this project went through Article 80 Large Project Review. There was an extensive community process for well over a year. The development team worked well with the neighbors to address their concerns, including taking away the Baker Street entrance and also decreasing the number of units significantly. As Mr. Quilty had said, this did, was BPDA approved back in September, and we'd just like to put our record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Michael Rooney, Senior Project Manager with the Boston Planning and Development Agency. After over a year going through the Article 80 Review process, the proposed project at 270 Baker Street was approved by the BPDA Board in September 2017. I want to commend the development team as they worked well with the community and made a number of changes to the project based on community and city agency feedback. BPDA staff feels this project brings an appropriate use, height and density to the site and will be a great addition to the neighborhood. And we are in support of the project. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Chris, representing the Carpentry Union. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Is anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? The, please, hold on, sir.
Yeah, hello, I'm sorry. I'm having trouble, I have a hearing impairment. So I haven't heard what you've said, but I'm in the butter to the 270 Baker Street or the VFW Parkway. And my family has lived in that neighborhood.
Hold on. Can you, one, take your hat off?
Could you speak up? Either that or I'm going to have to, I have a hearing impairment.
Will you, will you-
Under the ADA, could you turn the speaker around?
This is about as high as it goes. Take off your hat and please ask him to put his name and address on the record.
Oh, sorry, I think it's 18 Helden Street, West Roxbury.
Okay, and finally, don't read us anything, just tell us what your concern is, okay?
I'm sorry.
Tell her your concern.
Just, just-
Well, there are a lot of concerns. One is that they're not maintaining the property now. Two is it's going to add a great deal of traffic to Helden and Dunwell Streets, which are residential streets. Three, it's one-family neighborhood and this is multiple family, uh-
Could you speak farther away from the speaker?
Sure. It's, the neighborhood that they're putting us in is basically one-family homes, and now we're putting in 70 or 80 families in an area that traditionally has been commercial, going back, as far back as I can remember, that's 72 years or even further back than that. It adds nothing to the neighborhood in terms of any benefit, and it's going to take away from the entire neighborhood in many ways. I mentioned that they're not maintaining the property now, they have a fence, St. Bracca Road, which because it is old, has been broken, it takes two months to get them to fix it. That's just one of the concerns. There is nothing bad that's going to come of this for the neighbors in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? That's it?
Anything else that you want to add?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Bill McGargill, City Councilman Matt O'Malley. The council appreciates the applicant meeting with the residents for the last two years. It's definitely, I think they mentioned there was about eight meetings or so. The neighbors still have concerns over traffic, particularly the ease of taking a legal turn onto Gardner Street and then onto Helden Street. And we ask that applicants continue to work with transportation on that concern. Some neighbors have also not seen the final design, and we ask that they still meet with the neighbors regarding the design especially, and then the traffic especially, if they are able to change anything on Gardner to stop that illegal turn. Thank you.
Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review and council and applicants, I'd like to make, you know, I'd like to make a strongly worded sentiment that you work together with the neighborhood to make sure that that works. It seems as though you're almost all the way there and it needs a little bit of, the edges need to be rounded off. So if you could do that, I think that we, I could support that.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 773-901, 1465 VFW Parkway. This is to combine two lots into one lot and construct a new 42-foot by 50, one-story gas station, convenience store structure, and new gasoline dispensing canopy. It's to raise the existing building on lot. The violation is Article 56, Section 15, gasoline station is conditional. Article 56, Section 16, front yard 56-40 is insufficient. Article 56, Section 16, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 56, Section 16, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Stephen Miller, McDermott Quilty and Miller, 28 Custom House Street in Boston. I have with me Mark and Peter Dia Barclay, who are the owners of the property, and also Alan McCully, who's Vice President of AEB Engineering, to answer any questions. By way of background, I did pass out to the board, this project was approved exactly as we're presenting it today by you in March of 2010. And what happened is my client spent approximately three and a half years, unbeknownst to me, working with Boston Water and Sewer to come up with a plan for the project, came back to me in 2017 and said he was surprised that he went to the, get his permit and found out that the zoning had expired. Obviously, it's something we could have come back to you at that time.
Now, which gas station is this? Is this the one by Home Depot or?
No, it's further down-
Right under West Roxbury, in line.
I-Party, past the I-Party.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Actually, I do remember that, yes.
At the time that we came before you in 2010, which we presented again, behind the property, there's an apartment building and off to the left of the property, there's a trailer park. There's a petition that I've given you with the majority of the people in both of those units that are supporting this. So we started again in 2017, have gone through the process again. When we were going to get our permits, we had already gotten the sign-offs as required by the zoning decision in 2010 for BPDA, at that time BRA Design Review. So the proposal now is to do exactly-
So that was some BPDA Design Review, and was there anything about the curb cuts on that?
No, not at that time. No, there was nothing on the curb cuts. There was BPDA Design Review when we had the hearing, which you may remember, but there was a question of buffering and some plantings and whatever. So we did have sign-off from BRA at that time.
And does Mr. Bazani have the plans, the signed-off plans?
He has plans, we're going to have to go back to BPDA anyway at this point, that it was BRA signed off and several years ago, so we assume we'd go back and have the same person review it.
And was there a proviso for the signage also?
The only proviso, and I did give you a copy of that decision, the only proviso was a design review, subject to design review by BRA at that time.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Technically accurate.
Technically accurate?
Technical but adequate.
Technical but adequate.
He's on a roll today.
There's a new one, new one for me.
Any questions from the board? Anybody here to speak in support of the proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in support. Back in late November, they went 1465 VFW Parkway, went before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. And they voted 12-0 in favor of the proposal, with the condition that the only allowed use for the new retail structure be as a convenience store. So just like to put our record in support. Thank you.
Which is welcome, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shannon Murphy from City Council, Matt O'Malley's office. The council liked to go on record in support of this project. The councilor is aware of some of the neighbors' concerns and would like for the applicant to meet the needs and requests that were vocalized at the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council meeting, which was held on Tuesday, November 28, 2017. The neighborhood council requested that the existing store stay a convenience store and asked that they promise not to change its current occupancy. They also noted that it was a dark area and requested that the owner improves its lighting. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, on behalf of City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. I agree with the sentiments of Council O'Malley. The council like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Perez, representing the Carpenter's Union. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Does anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
With BRA Design Review for screening and buffering and lighting?
You already have BRA Design Review.
Well, we just need to make, this is a new, it's a new appeal. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Calling BOA 760-318.
Which Brighton, which Brighton garage do you, do you own? Is it the one on Washington Street or comma?
That is my brother, that is not.
Oh, it's not yours?
Yeah. He has one on Washington Street.
On Washington Street, yep.
Calling BOA 760-318, 106 Academy Hill Road. This is creating excess parking for existing two-family home located on both sides. Each side will have two additional parking spaces for a total of six vehicles. Violation Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area accessory uses. Article 51, Section 56, location of off-street parking in the front yard. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking, design and maneuverability. Article 9, Section 1, extension of annoying conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is George Shen, or Richard Shen. I own a two-family house near Brighton Center. Currently, it has two parking in front of the house next to the street, also on the ramp. There's two currently parking. And I have green land on the both sides. Each side is about 12 feet wide. So I, I hope can get permit to cut the curb and create two driveway each, at each side, add two additional parking, so that my son and family can have parking also. That will reduce the pressure, parking pressure in Brighton area.
You have a two-family home, and you want some parking on this side and some parking on this side? Mr. Bazani, tell us about the plan.
See, what would happen would be, imagine a two-family home with three parking spaces on the left and three parking spaces on the right. The first four, that is two on the left and two on the right, are front yard parking. Ergo, we have a two-family home with four cars for front yard parking.
Mr. Bazani, does this look like it has?
Has no mark.
No, Mr. Bazani, does it look like it has garage? Is it garage parking?
It's already garage.
Yeah, currently, the two parking is at the, in front of the garage door.
Yeah.
That's currently, is on the rent.
Yeah.
Right. And I hope to have additional parking on each side.
Oh, I see.
On each side, and cut the curb.
Now, is that a two-family or three-family house?
It's two-family house.
I see three mailboxes. Is there anybody, it's a two-family house?
No, it's two-family house. Probably, sometime there was additional, there is a basement. Someone probably used to live there, but not currently.
Is there, right now, I'm looking at the picture. There's a stairway that goes up the middle. And then there's garage doors on both sides.
Yes.
How many cars can park in the garages?
Garage inside is used as storage. The car only parking the space is in front of each garage door. So currently, it's two parking.
But it could be used, but maybe that's a garage.
Right, it could be used, but also it's in front of the house, next to the street. I don't know. I heard it's not legal or not right, it should, not in front of the parking. I don't know the detail about that, but.
You have an incredibly large lot. Your lot is 11,000 square feet.
Yes, the backyard is pretty big.
On the left side, there's a walkway or driveway that goes back. And you're moving up. Why don't you just bring the cars all the way around back?
So, so wait a second. So this, so there's a walkway adjacent to the house?
Right.
And there's a grassy strip? And then that driveway belongs to this house or the apartment?
No, the current driveway is the 100, the other house.
Oh, I see.
The other house. There is a small walkway next to the house.
Yes.
Yes, can walk back to the backyard. But if I intend to change the roof, for example, then no way the truck can get out to the back. You know? And also, in Brighton, you know, Brighton Center, the parking is pretty tight.
Yeah.
You have curb cuts now for the garages?
Yeah, in front of the garage, that's already cut. Right, that's the kind of two parking space, right. I hope to get more on each side.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, so are the plans are adequate? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board. John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Warren O'Reilly, we'd like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Seoma, also like to go on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jessica Rodriguez, City Council at Large, Denise Savi, Georgia's office. And she would also like to go on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, and the City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. Council going on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in opposition. This would essentially make the whole frontage of the property curb cuts.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion denied.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, your project has been denied.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 754-988-57 Gerish Street. This is to change occupancy from a one-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling in an existing condition. Violation Article 51, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article 51, Section 9, location of the main entrance. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking requirements, none as proposed. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Mark Cabral, 80 Hackett's Pond Drive, Hanover, Massachusetts. I am the owner of 57 Gerish Street. I purchased it a year and a half ago. I bought it, it was being used as a illegal three-family. Almost as a room and host. The house is divided into rooms with locks on the doors. We removed one of the kitchens and took out two of the bedrooms. I'm requesting that we change legal occupancy from a one to a two, simply because the size of home is attracting undergraduate students, and we don't want it to be a party house. We don't want to own a party house. I think if we were able to divide it into two smaller units, we'd be able to control the tenant.
Tell us about the size of the tenants.
Currently, the, the house is about 2,700 square feet. 900 square feet on each floor. The ground level is a full walkout, as the building's cut out of the hill. 900 square feet on each floor.
900 foot floor?
Yes.
Yeah? And let me just see the violations. Will you be providing any parking?
We will not be providing any parking. The home's on a dead-end street. There are no houses to the left of us. There's always been plenty of parking. Every time I've pulled up during construction, and for the last year and a half, I haven't found a lack of parking on the street.
Are you doing a gut rehab of that building?
We are not doing anything. We've just, we pulled a permit to remove the legal kitchen, take out two of the bedrooms. They had the rooms to provide it up. And basically, bring the home to its original intent, which was, you know, 12 by 12 rooms, not rooms.
Okay, so that's 900, about 900 square feet, a dwelling unit. How many bedrooms is that?
So the second unit, the first unit will have four bedrooms, the second unit will have one bedroom.
First unit will have four bedrooms?
Right.
Why, it would be in the basement?
No. Second and third floor each have two bedrooms, and the ground level will have one bedroom.
I'm sorry, I'm very confused. So the ground level would have one bedroom?
Correct.
And the top two would be combined for four bedrooms?
Four bedrooms, correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The ones are adequate. It shows a garden unit with one bedroom, and then a unit that goes for a second and makes a third floor, right?
Correct.
Occupies the remaining four bedrooms.
Correct.
What's the sense of the street? Is it a one or a two-family?
So this is actually in a, it's in a three-family, four-dominant zone. The building is, but I have a little over 3,700 square feet.
Is anybody here, any questions from the board?
Do you? Is the house beside a mirror image?
Yes, it is.
Are you on that one?
I do not.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Warren O'Reilly, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Seoma, also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Jessica Rodriguez from City Council at Large, Denise Savi, Georgia's office. She would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here in opposition?
Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm Dr. Keskin. I own the property immediately behind Abbotting, 48 Newton Street.
48 Newton, yeah.
And I also represent 44 Newton Street, which is my neighbor. And we have an association, Overlook Conda Association, six units. We want to make sure that the retaining wall and it is, construction and integrity is not, is maintained. There is a 20-foot retainer wall, concrete, that is holding the Gerish Street and the hill back from our property and our yards. So we just oppose any changes to that retainer wall, because it's a safety issue. And we don't oppose any construction or parking, but we want to make sure that the retaining wall and the area is safe, like, you know, no cars back up and fall 20 foot to our properties, and all those.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in opposition? So you're not going to be touching that retaining wall?
No, ma'am.
No, so you're only going to be working on cleaning up the house?
Yes, which we've already done.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with, do we need BPDA? No, just a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Calling a last case for 10:30, calling BOA 794-040-69 North Beacon. This is building code only. This is a structure prepared to install an eight-foot round window and existing brick wall. A violation 705.8, opening in exterior walls. Name and address for the record, please.
Shane Mulruany, 51 Melster Street, Boston, representing Redline Limit, the ownership, to install that eight-foot round window in an exterior wall.
So, so give us background, because what is this, a one or two or three? What is it?
As far as the building type?
Yeah.
The building type is a former auto body shop. It's tucked behind 38 Everett Street, adjoining Stop &amp; Shop, close to Boston Landing. There are technically Noah butters, well, the butter on the backside of Stop &amp; Shop has no opposition of the window going in. It's for, the building is still used for auto repair and showroom.
So this is an auto repair. What is the name of it? Is the?
Redline Limit is the ownership. The auto repair is rare precious metals.
Red, okay. And this is to, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
It drives a fire, and it shows an eight-foot diameter.
So it's coming in for building code relief?
The reason why is it's on a, it's on a lot line. So any new window in a lot line would not be allowed per the building.
Well, it is, like, it's fire rated.
It's fire rated. So we are fire rating it with a sprinkler head. There is a model that we are utilizing that meets the rating.
How? You're gonna use a fire-rated frame, sorry.
The?
And then use fire-rated glass, sorry.
And then Tyco Model WS Sprinkler Ed on the inside base of the glass.
Okay, so it sounds like you're meeting building code.
We are, but there was still the requirement to come in for a lot line window, because it is on a, the wall is on a property line, and that would be the violation.
Well, the issue is opening.
Correct.
Not, and as long as the material that is there is rated the same as the material on your lot line, you're fine.
Yep.
Which means that you have to have fire-rated glass, fire-rated frame. So we're going to deny building code relief because your testimony indicates that you're going to comply. That is, you're going to put in fire-rated glass and fire-rated frames.
We're putting in, it's a steel round window. The glass itself is not rated. The rating comes, the rating comes in the sprinkler head. It's our, our understanding from the fire protection engineer that complies.
Well, it's the board's position not to alter the fire rating on the exterior wall. You can comply with that, by using fire-rated glass and fire-rated frames. Make a motion to deny building code relief.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Other three discussions for 11:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Address, councilor?
90-102 Tinian Street, Deutsche.
For the record, calling BOA 678-322-90 to 102 Tinian Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 15 Broad Street. Based on Mayor's Office recommendation, there's community agreements and some reg changes that are imminent, so we're seeking a deferral for this particular billboard. If there's anything available in a first April date, that would be ideal. If not, then?
Yeah, we're booked for April, so we're gonna have to go to May.
Okay, fine.
But, you can ask a question. I mean, this project is being deferred, deferred, deferred.
I, I know there's.
I have three deferrals stamped on it already.
Yeah.
Is there any real chance that it's gonna be?
So there are a number of proposed billboards in this corridor. So we would like to, you know, we believe we have a lot of butter support for this proposal, and we believe there's changes that are imminent. And in talking to the Mayor's Office, we believe those changes are imminent. So we would hope for a deferral.
So you're thinking imminent is May?
We believe this is already going to come out, but we definitely hope and believe May.
And because, as you know, this is not new, but as you know, we are loath to issue too many deferrals. So this, this is your last chance, because, so you might think about your date. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I made a motion to defer.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's do like a July or August date, so it gives you enough time to?
Is it possible to a little bit earlier than that, just to?
June, because?
We can do June.
Okay.
June 12th.
Last date in June, okay?
June 12th.
Okay.
11:30.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Yes.
Address, please.
222 Harvard Street.
For the record, calling BOA 766-691-222 Harvard Street. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Douglas Wan, architect, and here's owner, Mr. Obie Gray.
Mr. Gray, are you requesting a deferral or a withdrawal?
Referable.
Deferral, but you were deferred once before. Deferral, but you were deferred once before, what's holding you up? Mr. Wan, can you respond, please?
The BPDA has the original, that's an initial one, for the four units, compared to what we see in six units. We may try to ask for five units, if that happened, we'd rather go through the Triangle Harvard Ave. and Talbot Ave. and Blue Hill Ave. That neighborhood, we didn't make a presentation to us, so we discussed with the Mayor's Office, we agreed to make that presentation to that neighborhood group.
And when are you meeting with them?
That will be coordinated by that Madam and Coordinator, Rudy Celeste, she's here.
So, you're going to, we are requesting a deferral for how many months?
We're organizing to process the work, and March is going to be the month of the first.
So, okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
May 22nd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, just a reminder, we're not really pleased with too many deferrals, so make the time count and get whatever done that you need to get done, okay?
Understood, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
How about the...
Madam Chair, yep. For the record, calling BOA 712-439-822-KEMBLE STREET. We have a letter of withdrawal from the proponents. Make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 710-259-51-LALLEY STREET. This is a record, new four-story, two-family dwelling with red decks on an existing 3,557 square foot lot. There will be a headhouse built to access a new roof deck for Unit 2. The violation is Article 10, Section 1, limitation of area of accessory uses. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking design and maneuverability. Article 65, Section 8, a two-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 65, Section 8, accessory parking for a two-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the lot area is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive. And Article 65, Section 9, the building height, number of stories, is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. My name is James Rudser, and I represent the applicant West Point Realty Development, who's here represented by James Pascal on my right. To my left is Tim Johnson, who is the project architect. If I could address what I...
Let Mr. Rudser just back up for one minute. Tell us why you were deferred the last time, what's happened since that deferral?
Okay.
And then we can move on from there.
So, this lot was, this lot has been a vacant piece of land for a long, long time. And as a result of that, there was some community opposition to the development of the piece of land, and I think during that period of time, we've been able to address some of it, and so that was the basis of our deferrals on this. As far as substantively, the project, I'd like to address what I think are perhaps some of the more lightning rod issues, but I think that upon explanation, you'll see that they aren't really. My experience before this board is to not, is to any time that there's a structure above the third level, to refer to it as a story. So, if you look at the plans, although the plans in the rejection letter say that it's a four-story structure, the only thing that's above the third full story is this headhouse that is approximately 120 square feet, and it's only for access to a roof deck. There is no habitable space, there isn't a solarium, a recreation room, or anything of the type. But as an excess caution, we've decided to refer to those structures not as headhouses, but rather as stories, but I would just draw your attention to how limited in size and scope it is. Again, this property sits in a 1F 5,000 district, but I would point out that of the surrounding 45 properties on Lally Street and Port Norfolk Street, 22 of them are two or three families. There are then 23 of them are single families. One of the...
So, do you have an issue here with base flood elevation?
I don't believe we do.
No?
Madam Chair, this project has been active and going through design changes since 2015. The project surveyor hasn't updated his map. However, the lowest level will be at base flood elevation or higher.
Okay, so this is a two-family, what's the square foot of each individual unit?
Madam Chair, the, both are two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath units, and they are duplex units. The Unit 1 at the lower level, or first and lower level, will be 1,649 square foot, 1,649 square feet, and then the second and third floor will be 1,961 square feet. Again, both are two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath units.
And how is the parking going to work?
The parking is located on the left side, as you look at the property, on the left side, it is a 12-foot wide driveway, 12-foot wide curb cut, and we will have three parking spaces on that driveway.
And what's required?
What is required is one space per dwelling unit or two spaces. We are parking in tandem, and we're seeking relief for that.
Okay. Let's just see, you have building height, you have FAR, you have number of stories, okay? Limitation of area of accessory use, what is that triggered by?
We are parking within the five foot of the side yard setback.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate. Tim, is the plan actually changed?
They have not, Mr. Bazani, right.
Okay, so we, and we still have that headhouse to the roof deck?
Ah, yes, yes, Madam Chair.
The access to the roof, to the roof deck, is that for a one unit or for all units?
That is for the top unit only.
Okay, so why not just do a hatch?
That is an option, Mr. Bazani. I'd have to defer my...
I mean, it's a very nice looking building, but that has, the architectural term, I think, sucks.
I am, I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Bazani, and we're hoping through BPDA, BPDA Design Review, we can minimize that.
I think we'll help, help.
We can help you with that. Is it, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is David Carter, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPDA Design Review, and this board as a proviso wants to eliminate the headhouse and substitute a roof hatch. Can use one of the slop hatches.
Understood, Mr. Bazani.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso, you're all set.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bazani, just confirming, you have drawings dated 3/21/17?
I have drawings dated 3/21/17.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the last case, three discussions for 11:30, calling BOA 763-031, 101 Milton Avenue. This is a record, new single-family dwelling on an existing garage and driveway on a vacant lot. The violation is Article 69, Section 29, off-street parking loading requirements, design and maneuvering areas within the lot. Article 69, Section 9, insufficient width of lot. And Article 69, Section 9, insufficient lot width frontage. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Palcini, 10 Forbes Road, Braintree, Massachusetts. Good afternoon, today with me is Michael Stallings, who's the developer on this project.
So, tell us why you were deferred the last time, and what has changed in that meantime?
Sure. We had done an initial meeting with the Fairmount Hill Neighborhood Association, and they requested that we come back to the full board, and through ONS, they asked Mr. Stallings to defer the last meeting until he had an opportunity to do that. He did have the opportunity to go back before the Fairmount Neighborhood Association, and they voted to support this project.
Okay, so this is a two-family dwelling?
It's a single...
No, it's a single-family dwelling?
It's a single-family dwelling, zoning in Fairmount Hills, 1F 9,000. The proposal before you is 9,466 square feet. The zoning violations, there were listed three, it is, the frontage needed is 70 feet, the frontage provided is 53.13 feet, and...
And the modal?
With.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's pre-existing, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the other was parking. Mr. Bazani, we have provided a new set of drawings that amended that, so the parking issue is alleviated by that.
So, tell us, explain it to us.
Sure. So, as I stated, the proposal is to build a 2,500 square foot, single-family residence in a 9,466 square foot lot. The FAR allowed is a .3, the FAR proposed is a .26. The house makeup will be four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms.
Tell us how the parking is going to be addressed?
So, you can see the parking on the most recent plans, which I've provided to you. Parking's going to come in the left side of the yard, there's a turnaround, and there's an existing barn that's in the back that will be used for parking. I've also provided to the, to the board 14 letters of support from the Butters and Neighbors, which you have in there, and as I stated, Fairmount Neighborhood Association supported the project as well.
So, everything, you're parking your driveway, everything will be accommodated on-site with a turnaround in the back?
That is correct.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and a Butters' meeting was held with majority support from community residents. We're just going to go on the record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Walter Applewhite, Counselor, Tim McCarthy's office, would also like to go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I'm a director Butter and support the project. It'll improve our neighborhood, great, great project, we're happy to see it come on.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Jawan Skeens, representing District 4, City Council, President Andre Campbell's office, we would like to go on record in opposition due to lack of community support from Dawn of Dunn Association over on Milton Avenue.
Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak in opposition?
I think this is a, I don't think that's a different, I think that's a different address.
Jawan. Are you, are you speaking about a property located at 101 Milton Avenue in High Park?
Is that High Park?
It is.
Okay, I thought that was within Dorchester's. Okay, so if that's a different project, I would like to retract that.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else to speak in support?
Hi, my name's Larry Kenny, I'm also a resident of, excuse me, of 125 Milton Avenue, and I support this project, it's going to, another member of the neighborhood.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to, make a motion to approve with continued BPA Design Review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, you're welcome.
Calling the last case of the day on interpretation, BOA 789-872-144 to 146-MAVRICK STREET. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, this has been deferred to the end of this month, March 27.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Second, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.